The July 30, 2020 school board meeting is now called to order. In consideration of the current health and safety concerns during the COVID-19 pandemic, the school board continues to modify its meeting processes. Up to 30 seats, in addition to board and staff, have been made available to interested community members and media through an online registration process. Persons wishing to speak that do not have a seat will be waiting outside and escorted to the meeting room with the appropriate portion of the meeting. Opportunity was also provided to make recorded comments through advanced registration. Those recordings will be played at the proper time as well. Ms. McDougall will be joining us telephonically. Ms. Escobar, roll call, please.
Ms. Belford?
Present.
Ms. McDougall?
Present.
Present.
Mrs. Duskovich?
Present.
Mrs. Campbell?
Present.
And Mr. Susan?
Present.
The board will hold a moment of silent reflection in memory of three VPS family members who have recently passed. Niang Kim, a senior from Merritt Island High School; Edward Stoltenberg, a head custodian from Astronaut High School; and Robert Kennedy, a bus driver from Transportation Services. We will now say the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. At this time, I want to offer my fellow board members and Dr. Mullins the opportunity to recognize students, staff, programs, and community members for the contributions afforded to provide public schools. Ms. Duskovich, I believe you have a special recognition this evening?
I do. I'm gonna start with a quick one and then move on to the special one, just to get the quick one, so we don't forget Ms. McGill at the end. I wanted to give a shout out to Ms. Samantha McGill. She is the media specialist at Sea Park Elementary School. She does an amazing program for Veterans Day every year, and this year, the 2019-2020 year, she was awarded the VFW Teacher of the Year award, so Veterans of Foreign Wars. And they sent over some information, and usually they do a lot of the extra special things for their Teacher of the Year, but obviously because of COVID, she didn't get a whole lot of special recognition like the Teachers of the Year usually do, so they asked us to acknowledge her in the best way possible. And so, I wanted to make sure we acknowledge her. They said that she's been doing the Take a Vet to School Day for 12 years now. I know, I'm looking around, many of you have been there with us on that program every year that she does, and it's phenomenal. So, thank you, Ms. McGill. The next shout out goes to the city of Satellite Beach, and we have two representatives here, Courtney Barker, the city manager, and Liz Alworth, the assistant city manager, is that correct? If you guys can come up to the microphone, we have an agenda item this evening that we are going to vote on in partnership with the city of Satellite Beach, and they wanted to speak to that just for a minute.
Thank you. We appreciate you all having us this evening. We have an agreement before you, and we really wanted to come and talk to you about it because we're really proud of it, and I think you all should be very proud of it too. Your staff is amazing, Sue Hawn and Dave Lindeman are, you know, I think they're really sick of us right now, but we really did work hard for basically the last year of putting this together. And there's a lot of moving parts to this agreement, so, you know, we have, it's, you know, we're very fortunate to have Tina Duskovich as our board member because she understands that, you know, it's a lot easier and cheaper to do things together, and it's mutually beneficial in many ways if we could sit down and hash out some of these agreements. And so, she recognized that right away, so we had her support from the beginning. And we were able to, you know, the school was able to give us something we needed, which is land. You know, we're on beachside, so putting stormwater in is a challenge for us. Finding property to do that is very expensive, and it's very challenging just to find even vacant land. And you have that at the school, Satellite High School. One of the things that we have that you need is maintenance, so, you know, you guys are always talking about your challenges with maintenance, and we were able to come to the table with that. And then, some of the other challenges the school board has is just really doing those extra things at the schools, like batting cages and renovating the basketball courts. And so, you know, we sat down and hashed out this agreement, which basically would give us about 10 feet into the property line on Jackson Avenue, and then also kind of a baseball field-sized area for a pond. And that would enable us to build a public works building at the end of the road, and then also do a treatment train of stormwater all the way down to another property we acquired at the end of Jackson before it hits the lagoon. So, it's basically a water quality, flood attenuation project that will benefit the whole community and the school. I know when we get a hard rain, the school can't, you know, their Jackson Avenue is flooded badly. So, we are providing basketball courts, we're building batting cages. And we were joking around that we really wanted to get this agreement done quickly because every time we turn around, the school's asking us to do another thing. But, and then we also have, Brav County is doing a lagoon-related project there. And when we found that out, we met with Brav County, and we combined our projects and made it even better. So, it's been a great process. We also have FPL involved. They want to harden the lines down the road, and we said, whoa, 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 wait until we get this done, and can you move them back? So, we have room to put sidewalks and landscaping and stormwater, and they've agreed to do that. So, we have a lot of moving parts to this agreement, and if we, we wouldn't have been able to get it done without your great staff and our great school board member, and, you know, we really hope to get your support on it. And I just see that, you know, these types of things happening again in the future, you know, we were talking about, you know, the maintenance of the fields, and we thought, you know, let's start researching that because that might be something we can do at cost for you, but at a better level of service, simply because we're there all the time, you know? So, these are things that we can work together on and really, you know, save our taxpayers' money and, you know, combine our forces to do better for our community. So, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. We're very fortunate to have such a great relationship with you guys, and we certainly appreciate you supporting us as much as we support you. So, Ms. Duskovich, thank you.
Absolutely. Just want to add again, thank you both so much. Our relationship with the city of Satellite Beach is, you know, it's priceless, and I'm really excited to see how Jackson Avenue is going to look, and I'm looking forward to the batting cages and, of course, the basketball courts. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Campbell, did you have any recognitions?
Last week, I got to go visit Turner and Discovery where they're doing both the GEAR summer program, which is geared towards our reading up through rising fourth graders, I think that is, right? Just all reading-focused, they're doing great work with the students who are there. And then also, the Rising Up kindergarten program, it was in, I think it's third or fourth day. And small classes, but just really getting those students who were identified as having some pretty severe gaps, had really fallen behind during our distance learning time, and just needed that extra bump before school starts. And so, just kudos to our teachers and staff who are working with those students this summer and just really helping them stay focused. And then, on Tuesday, Dave Lindeman took me on a tour of facilities, projects down in District 5, and they're going on in all of our districts, but I got to, you know, go climb into the chiller buildings and, you know, climb up into the mezzanine. It was lots of fun. I learned that hard hats are really important. So, but just, we are, there's lots of efficiency being put in with, especially with our HVAC systems, the new chiller towers at Columbia and McAuliffe, and at some of the other schools, I think Freedom 7 was getting the same kind. Central and the Meadow lanes, you know, we've been struggling with air conditioning for the last several years, and that project is just really moving along. So, and our great, you know, our great Wharton Smith and Welsh Construction, all those guys who are doing a fantastic job, and they're gonna be finishing up pretty much this week, right? So, it was exciting to see all the things that everyone's doing and our awesome school staff who's working with them to get it done.
Mr. Susan?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to the individuals that have been working with me. I've said their names before on the COVID team that we've had that have given me all of the insight that I've been able to bring to the table as far as an individual school board member with their expertise and helping me out, understand the different aspects of our community. I also wanted to say, is it Ms. McGill that won that VFW of the year, Ms. Duskovich?
McGill.
McGill?
McGill.
Now, was it out of a post out of satellite? Is that which one of the satellite posts?
I didn't think it was just one post. Do they each pick their own?
They pick one, and then they put it into the system, and then it goes state, and then it goes national.
Yeah, I think she, I think.
It's an amazing honor to do that. I think that she, when we get honored from any of our armed service people, that is, I won the National VFW Teacher of the Year back in the day, and to see that was absolutely amazing. So, that's a big feat for her. And I did want to say thank you to Ms. Barker. You guys are amazing in Satellite Beach, and at a time when our politics are very contentious, a lot of our city managers work very well together. And you guys are an elite group, both with the ones that I have inside my district. We were able to do some stuff locally at one of my schools, but it's so nice when we have those meetings where we meet up with all the city managers here and we're able to collaborate. But you guys are special over beachside. I know many of you guys have done a great job in what you do, and we're honored to have partnership. And maybe we can continue it on like what we had spoken about with a lot of the healthcare and so other things that we have options on, so thank you for that. And with that, I'm done.
Ms. McDougall?
I just want to give a shout out to all of our principals, all of our summer staff that have been working in the school to get ready for our schools to be open, and a great big shout out to all of our principals. And that's all I really have. I just want to recognize the principals and how hard they're working, and I so appreciate them.
Thank you, Ms. McDougall. Dr. Mullins?
Thank you, Ms. Belford. Couple acknowledgements I want to make. First, last spring, Cindy Johnson, who is our resource music teacher, she's been with Brav schools for 42 years, I believe a total of 47 years total in education. She took it upon herself, she was thinking ahead, what do we need to be thinking about next school year with instruments? If we're still in a, you know, a situation with COVID, what impact would that have in our music programs? She surveyed our teachers to find out how many instruments are shared, because tubas are expensive. And so, she took an inventory, and one of our amazing business partners, community partners, the Phoenix Foundation, who I'll remind the board I know knows our community, they have funded the summer fine arts program, to our disappointment that we can't, couldn't hold this summer, but they have funded our summer fine arts program that we were able to bring back just for the last two summers. They funded it into the future, but they have contributed over $60,000 to purchase additional instruments so our schools have one per student, and there's no students sharing instruments, and we can maintain our music programs in the coming year. So, a huge thank you to the Phoenix Foundation for their continued, very generous support and investment in our performing arts and fine arts programs across Brav County that really, they set us apart across the state. And then, I want to acknowledge two ladies who are retiring from our, from the school system, who have just set us apart across the state in the programs that they have helped lead, and that is Cindy Johnson, our resource teacher for music, and Janice Schultz, our director of CTE. Today, to our bittersweet emotion, it was her last day on the job, and we were able to, the new CTE director started a few weeks ago, so we were able to provide that overlap to a very dynamic position in a very complex funding situation. You know how many CTE programs we have across the district, but I just want to take this opportunity to recognize Janice and Cindy again for their immeasurable investment in Brav public schools, our students, our families, likely second-generation Brav students now, given how long that they've been with our school system, and thank them for their amazing service and commitment to Brav schools. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, and thank you to both Cindy and Janice. They have done amazing things for our district, and we're so appreciative. I too was able to get out and take a look at our summer program last week, and just want to give kudos to the folks that have been working really hard to close some of those achievement gaps for our students. They are fortunate to be working in small groups and same age groups and same types of gaps, and so I think it's a really effective way for us to reach those students and really help them to close some of those achievement gaps. So, and thank you to Jane Klein and the team in elementary leading and learning for making that possible for our students. I think it's gonna be critical going forward. And then I also want to just give a shout out to our principals. They are working incredibly hard at this time. Of course, our secondary principals were, were working on getting graduations the past couple of weeks, but they too are working with some really challenging scheduling situations and doing their best to really make all things possible for our families so we can find something that works for each and every one of them. And I know it's not easy, and I know they're jumping through lots of hoops right now, and we just really, really appreciate the work that they and their teams are doing, so. That will bring us to the adoption of the agenda.
Can I say something real quick to somebody that's in there? Ms. Liz Alworth, you are amazing at the city of Satellite Beach, but Liz is there, and I didn't recognize you because of the mask, I apologize, but you also put in at the county many years and have the ability to work out. So, I did want to honor you for being here, and thank you for all your work too. Thank you. Sorry, I didn't recognize her.
That's okay.
She's amazing.
Well, and how long have you been with Satellite Beach, Liz?
Ever since everything good started happening, right?
You guys have the dream team over there. Absolutely. All right. So, Dr. Mullins, we are now at the adoption of the agenda.
Ms. Belford and members of the board, on this evening's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, 11 consent items, nine action items, which include the tentative budget hearing and two information items. Changes made to the agenda since being released to the public on July 23, 2020 are as follows. A7 on administrative staff recommendations receive revisions. G20 on department-school initiated agreements receive revisions. G22 on amendment of language regarding face coverings in the reopening schools 2020-21 plan is in addition.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan. Who was the second? Ms. Campbell? Seconded by Ms. Campbell. Any discussion? Just as a reminder, board members, since the public is back with us, Ms. Escobar is no longer calling for the vote, so we're gonna go ahead and vote on the agenda, if you would not mind. Please, voting.
Ms. Duskovich, where are you gonna pull?
We're just voting on the agenda. I can pull when we go to action items, no?
You gotta, you're voting to approve the agenda, you're moving the agenda, right? You're pulling the item off the agenda?
Okay. I thought I had to pull it just from consent when we voted specifically on consent.
Okay, that's fine.
Ms., will that work? I don't want to.
Yeah, that should be fine.
Okay.
Are we good?
Hang on, I wasn't in the right place, just a second.
You do Cheryl with a voice vote?
Ms. McDougall, are you able to access Agenda Plus?
You know, I can, I'm on it, but for whatever reason, my voting box is not showing, and I don't understand why. I don't understand why. But it's not letting me vote. So anyhow, but I say I approve, aye.
Okay. Ms. Escobar, is that sufficient? Do you want to go back to voice vote on, on the next votes? So, the motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins, will you please tell us about administrative staff recommendations?
There are three persons under this category for the board's consideration.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Is there any discussion? Please vote.
Okay, I'm going to be an aye.
Thank you, Ms. McDougal. The motion passes 5-0.
Ms. Belford, if I may, just for a second?
Yes, ma'am.
I voted in supportive, of course, and I haven't even talked to Ms. Thomas, but I just wanted to give her a farewell from Satellite High as she moves on to another school and out of District Three. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right. We are now at public comments. As indicated in my opening statement, persons wishing to comment will be present either in person or through recorded messages. As we have the tentative budget hearing, we'll be listening during the appropriate portions of the meeting for comments on the proposed milledge and tentative budgets. We are first going to listen to our speakers who are present. First is Stacy Donovan. And Stacy, you'll be speaking at this microphone right here in front of us. Whenever you're ready.
Good afternoon. For the last 13 years, I have been an IEP advocate for my daughter and today I speak on her behalf. Since kindergarten, she's received services for the deaf and hard of hearing. She's learned early to master the art of lip reading to overcome the challenges of communication. I too have hearing loss with only 20% left, a lip reader with over 40 years of experience. Under the Individual with Disabilities Education Act, I have been insured of this opportunity to collaborate with you as a partner in the educational decisions regarding my child. I'm here today to ask you to prohibit masks during class instruction for both teachers and students. I realize that I present an unpopular request, but I promise that it's not a selfish one. I'm here as a voice not only for my child, but possibly for some of the other 13,000 students with an IEP and the entire 70,000 that you've promised in education to be served with excellence as its standard. Those who have hard of hearing on the spectrum, dyslexic, sensory impaired, and young children who are in their formative years, use facial expressions, nonverbal clues, and pay very careful attention to body language and the use of mouth and lip movements to communicate, gather, and process information. The sight and hearing senses work closely together to play a vital role in how we learn and experience the world around us. And this is why I'm asking for teachers not to wear a mask during instruction. Much is also learned from class discussion time. A BPS teacher would account for this as 50% of their day. If her classmates are wearing a mask, she's not going to be able to participate in that. And this is why I'm asking for students to take off their mask during class instruction time. Title II of the American Disability Act states that the communications with students with disabilities should be as effective as communication with others and shall be given primary consideration. Healthcare workers use a very specific kind of mask, change them frequently, remove them properly, dispose of them safely, and use them in combination with good hygiene. A poorly worn homemade mask can only put our children and teachers at risk. I don't think that BPS has the bandwidth to manage best practices for mask wearing for every student. I have personally felt deprived of social interaction in the simplest of daily exchanges. I can only imagine the increase in mental health issues that we will be faced with. You have laid out excellent options for families that are not quite ready to send their kids back in person. Please let us, those of us that need face-to-face instruction, actually be face-to-face. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Donovan, for joining us. Michaela Clark.
I've been told all of my life to stand up for what's right and not accept the bad things that happened to me. Not only did I learn this from my parents, but I learned this from my teachers here in Brevard County. Because you see, I am a product of Brevard County Public Schools. I'm a product of a mother who gave you 20 years of her life as a volunteer who was now employed by you. I'm a product of the teachers who have influenced me for the last 20 years in the classroom and outside the classroom. I can name all of them if I really wanted to, but it would take up my five, my three minutes. I'm a product of what your county and your teachers can create and influence. And more importantly, I am now one of your teachers. I am now influencing children into greatness and I have a lot of concerns. How can you expect greatness when you don't expect us to be safe? How can you expect greatness when you won't define the word expected? You expect students to wear their mask. Well, I expect my students to sit down every day and listen to me, but we know that doesn't always happen. We expect a lot of things, but expectations can't always be met. Mandating masks is the most bare minimum that you can do to keep us safe. And the great thing about science, because let me tell you, research proves that masks do stop the spread of COVID-19. Science is real whether you believe in it or not. And that's not really directed at you guys specifically, but at everybody listening. I understand how hard this decision is for you guys. I really, really do. But you guys were elected to represent us. You are expected to stand up for us and as far as I can tell, you're not standing up for us. You're not protecting the teachers who are risking their lives. You're letting children become guinea pigs in an experiment that we don't know the outcome of. Bayside High School just had an outbreak of COVID because of their graduations. I understand how hard this decision is for you guys, but I implore you to listen to your teachers. They taught you science. Please listen to that. You've already lost a lot of teachers and if things don't go well tonight, I expect you to lose more. I'm begging you. I'm ready to get on my knees and beg you guys to do the bare minimum and mandate masks because I love working here. I love seeing my teachers and my colleagues. I love that I have been, I'm 24 years old and I have been in Brevard County my entire life and I intend to stay here as long as I can. But you guys are making it really hard for me to do that. I yield my time.
Thank you, Michaela. Is your mom Jenny?
Yes.
Tell her I said hi. All right. Next is Anthony Clucci.
My name is Anthony Clucci. I'm the president of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. This week, Dr. Fauci told teachers, you're going to actually be part of the experiment of the learning curve of what we need to know. Remember, early on, when we shut down the country, as it were, the schools were shut down. So, we don't know the full impact. We don't have the database of knowing what there is to expect. You've created a plan that is supposed to keep us safe and that plan looks fairly good on paper, but plans that are written down and not carried out are worthless. And in the case of reopening schools during a pandemic, not carrying out those plans may be deadly. Let me give you an example. The plan currently says masks are expected. What I've seen recently is that the word expected means nothing. Last week, I went to school with students present in the building. To be clear, not one of the students was wearing a mask. To be clear, nine out of 10 teachers were not wearing masks. To be clear, the contractors working in the building were not wearing masks. To be clear, there was no social distancing. To be clear, expected meant nothing in this case. Last week, I decided to look for some former students and pictures of the graduation that were in the Florida today. To be clear, in this picture, I saw eight attendees without masks on and no social distancing. To be clear, expected meant nothing in this case. Expecting masks and not mandating them is a potentially deadly decision. You cannot send us into this experiment without all the protections being in place. If you do not mandate masks for all students, we are demanding that all teachers who find themselves in situations without six foot of social distance be provided N95 mask. You simply cannot send teachers into harm's way without providing them the best protection available. Lastly, I'd like to say, it's time that you all start participating in negotiations, whether that means sending Dr. Mullins to the table or at least you guys coming to attend. It's been far too, a far too convenient tactic to offer statements of reassurance and concern to employees, then send a team out to fight against proposals that benefit employees, all while acting naive about what's going on. And regardless of what some of you will claim, the work that the Brevard Federation of Teachers did at the bargaining table will make every student, teacher, and staff member safer from when they arrive at school to when they are dismissed. If the worst case happens in Brevard, I will be able to say I did everything I could to prevent it. Will you? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clucci. And Skipper, you're next.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Mullins. I'm Vanessa Skipper, vice president of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. Yesterday, the Florida chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics sent a letter to Governor DeSantis with their recommendations regarding school reopening. They asked that it be used by him and school districts and superintendents as they reopen schools. While the FCAAP believes, as we do, that nothing will truly replace a classroom teacher teaching in person with students, the benefits must outweigh the risks. In fact, they said that this goal may be the most important factor. They cited the World Health Organization, who says that the new positive test rate for COVID-19 should be less than 5% averaged over a 14-day period before schools can safely reopen. The FCAAP recommends that school districts and locales with higher positive test rates than 5% delay the start date for school until positive testing rates are lower. I am glad that the work we did together, and it was BFT forcing a conversation for a later start date, might allow us to get there. But if we get close to August 24th and we're not there, I hope this board has the fortitude to stand up and say, we're going to side with the professionals and the doctors and not open. I commend the school board chair for the length she has gone to try to get clarification from the leaders in our state about reopening. The lack of response and answers she received for those who govern our state leads me to believe that state leaders are willing to make strong, armed demands, but won't be willing to help out or take ownership when things go horribly wrong because of those demands. We can have the best plan on paper, but if the plan isn't implemented appropriately by all stakeholders and the appropriate tools are not available and given when needed, the plan will not be successful. And in this case, we're talking about human lives. It's amazing to me to think that society thinks schools can make social distancing happen and mitigate the spread of COVID-19 when a significant part of our society has scoffed at the idea of social distancing, wearing masks, and caring for other humans. In order for this to truly work, we need 100% buy-in from students, parents, faculty, and staff. However, looking at our community right now, that seems an impossible task. We are divided more than ever with people relying on their feelings and opinions rather than science and advice from professionals. The last time I spoke, I spoke about a positive graduation experience, except I was saddened to see that not all schools set the expectation tone the same way, with other graduations not handing out masks to people who didn't have them on, not insisting people sat on the blue tape. It's going to take everybody working together. And if we can't do that, we shouldn't open.
Thank you, Ms. Skipper. Mr. Savage?
I liked it much better when we were on the side than front and center. Ms. Belford, members of the board, Dr. Mullins, my name is Kyle Savage. I am the treasurer of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. There is no doubt in my mind, and I hope there is no doubt in your mind, that someone will contract COVID-19 at a BPS site this year. We can try everything, but as we heard earlier, all hands on board, hand washing, face masks, social distancing, nothing will be perfect, but we have to do the best we can. Statistics will tell us with the COVID-19 death rate averaging above 3%, it is likely that a BPS employee or student may die this year from contracting the virus. That virus could be contracted at a BPS site. My question to everyone is, have you done everything possible to make the return to school as safe as possible? I know for sure the Brevard Federation of Teachers has and will continue to fight for the safety of our teachers. And guess what? When our teachers are safe, our students are safe and that should be our goal. I listened to every school board meeting, workshop, 12 hours on YouTube, and I'm sure you guys have too. We've been here. And I've read all the materials related to reopening schools in a pandemic. Guess what? There's no great answers, but there are some simple things we can do. And if you want our schools to be safe, our community to be safe, and our economy to open back up, yeah, we, I'm sorry, and we want our economy to open back up, masks must be mandatory. As we've seen, when it's expected, people who want to do the right thing, do the right thing, but people who don't, don't do it. We need, yes, we need common sense exceptions and enforcements, but as we learned this week, it can't be left up to everyone doing the right thing. Unfortunately, it has been proven time and time again, people just refuse to do what is right and kind. I agree, we need social distancing. In our classrooms, we need to fight for six feet. We need to look at every single classroom. Some are larger than others. I have seen layouts this week with 24 students and a sixth grade classroom and the teacher was able to accomplish six feet of social distancing. Did it look perfect? No. Did it look fun? No. Did it look like a classroom I would have taught in last year? No. But guess what? We're in the middle of a pandemic. And finally, the governor talks over and over again about how students need options, how parents need options, and how teachers need options. Guess what? The students have the option right now. The parents have the option. You know who doesn't have a lot of great options? Is the teacher who doesn't feel safe in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. We appreciate you. Marie Rogerson?
First, let me say I don't envy your position. I don't want to trade your spots. I appreciate your, the opportunity though, to express my opinion on, on the situation. I would like to address the difference between a mandate and an expectation. Both can have consequences and clarifications. In my assessment, though, the major difference between them is the environment they create. As a parent, I want the schools my children attend to be environments of patience and understanding, and I'm sure the board does too. We all want students' individual needs to be met. It is my opinion that that is best done under an expectation and not a mandate. We are all concerned with those who are vulnerable to severe complications from contracting COVID. An expectation, though, allows the flexibility to protect them while protecting those with other vulnerabilities. The deaf or hard of hearing, those with special needs, those with medical conditions, those who have suffered abuse, anyone who would legitimately struggle with wearing a mask. A mandate, on the other hand, creates an environment of force, coercion, and even violence. Let's learn from major retailers who instituted mask mandates several weeks ago and have endured a string of viral videos, I'm sure you've all seen, in which a store employee not trained to deal with confrontation attempts to enforce their mandate and pushing, shoving, and violence ensue, sometimes even customer to customer. These retailers have walked back mandate enforcement. Why? They've realized that an expectation of mask wearing creates a better environment for their employees and their customers than a mandate. Let's not go through the same learning curve with our schools. While I think most students and teachers are reasonable, there will undoubtedly be someone who is not. A student who has experienced the loss of a family member due to COVID may become enraged by a classmate who, while social distanced, still feels the need to take their, take their mask off and take a break. A well-intentioned teacher may intimidate or embarrass a young student who struggles with wearing their mask. with wearing their mask. Under a mandate, the forceful are empowered. Under an expectation, there is enough flexibility that persecution, judgment, and hostile situations are less likely to take place. The beauty of an expectation is that people generally do try to rise to meet them. Under, sorry, while it allows some flexibility, it doesn't leave enough room for someone to completely flaunt the rules without reason. It simply gives the space to resolve issues peacefully. I have two BPS students, one is 10, the other 12, and a family we've decided they'll go back to school when they reopen. My kids understand they will be expected to wear a mask, and they understand what that means, but in the end, they are kids. I worry that under a mandate, in a difficult moment, if they slip off their masks, they may endure harassment. They're good kids, and they do their best to follow the rules, but again, I repeat, they're kids. And my kids, my kids are normal kids. They aren't ones who have endured, for example, abuse and won't be able to communicate the reasons they're struggling. Bullying has been a huge issue in our schools, and a mandate will create a whole new layer of bullying. Please remember, students who will struggle, create the safest environment for everyone by placing a mandate and, or placing an expectation and not a mandate.
Thank you, Marie. Jonathan Schuman?
I hope you can, you can hear me right through this? Good. Ms. Belford, distinguished board members, Dr. Mullins, I'm here to cover major points of concern with the opening of schools, beginning, of course, with the masks. Masks in some form must be mandated, as recommended by the CDC. The virus can spread in a person's exhale breath up to 20 feet with no mask, and the micro droplets will hang in the room air for hours. Children with smaller lungs under 10 or grade five can sit three feet apart. Children grade 6 to 12 with adult-type lungs need to sit six feet apart. These are actually minimums and must not be lowered. Brevard County's current positivity rate is 10.6%. That means that 17.7 out of 100 people randomly are carrying the virus right now. Research shows that people have gotten the virus again, and therefore immunity may not be permanent. The flu virus immunity is not permanent either. I got to get a shot every year. This virus is a vascular virus attacking blood vessels, okay? With a full viral load, it leaves no organs untouched. My mom died of system failure, not pneumonia. We, as a district, must submit to specific minimum positivity rates that we are going to accept for opening and closing a school. These rates have not been set. They need to be guided by health experts of our own health department because the state doesn't have the backbone to do it. And the fact is that if we don't follow these particular paths, we're going to end up with a very dark outcome. That outcome will be enhanced spread of the virus, ICU beds unavailable, people triaged to home, many who survived left with disease-related disabilities, and many unfortunate lawsuits aimed at our district due to viral-related disabilities or wrongful death. Finally, we, the teachers, need a place to go if we get infected, and I know it's not budgeted, and I know it's really going to be a big problem, not just the teachers, the administrators, the staff, the bus drivers. We're all going to need a place to go. Get some kind of hotel arrangements on state-related, state-related rates, okay, which are generally lower, and maybe re-channel some funds, like the funds that were originally geared towards giving teachers bonuses, okay? Instead of that, try to put those funds towards allowing us to quarantine safely and not hurt our partners. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schuman. Shelley Anderson?
Thank you, board members, for all of your hard work and efforts to accommodate everyone during this bizarre time in which we find ourselves. And thank you to all of the teachers. I will pray for you all as we enter the school year that we can strike a balance between safety and common sense. I wanted to note a couple of issues I found with the reopening of the school policy. My concern is the psychological and emotional impacts of placing masks on children and denying children free play. The theory is that these measures will provide safety. My fear is that there will be detrimental effects. Regarding efficacy of masks, it is a widely known fact: masks do not protect from a virus. Medical professionals know what masks are for and when they are appropriate. The efficacy of masks in prevention of transmission of a respiratory virus has been widely examined. There are many peer-reviewed, random-controlled studies published in medical journals. Many studies examined the N95 mask versus surgical masks and found no significant statistical difference in the rate of viral respiratory infection. Even N95 masks do not protect from a virus. I can email the links to all of the studies so all of you can inform your decisions with them. If you read the FDA label on the side of a mask, it will say, "Does not protect from a virus." I can only imagine, in an educational setting, elementary school, the masks are very effective at being a distraction, fogging glasses, creating an uncomfortable and air-hungry child, impeding effective verbal communication, creates a very dirty fomite that little children will not leave alone. After a long wait, it can lead to hypercapnia, acidosis, and headache, but is, first of all, the best way to promote fear. How strange will it be for kids to attend the first day of school and not be able to reveal their own face? Imagine going into a classroom and looking around and not being able to see the faces of your classmates. Maintaining social distance, not being able to play freely at recess or sit next to friends at lunch, this picture is a very strange milieu for learning. Perhaps a little fear or anxiety-inducing? Sounds like a formula to create a fearful and neurotic kid. These measures have the potential to condition our children, to reduce people and peers to nothing more than vectors of disease that should be feared. It is dehumanizing. Children need socialization for healthy development, more now more than ever. All right. Oh, please, I'm pleading with you. Let, have mercy on these kids. Let them show their face and play with their friends so they can hit the books.
Thank you for joining us. Sean Anderson? Okay. And Fred Kilgallen? Mr. Francisco, this is the last of our in-person speakers, just so you can be prepared when he's finished.
Good evening. My name is Fred Kilgallen. I'm here to speak on behalf of implementing a mask policy. I'm not going to recite all of the stats. You've heard enough of them. You've probably been reading enough of them on your own. So I'm going to address what I think is, well, for me, one of the most disappointing aspects of this entire pandemic, and that is the lack of innovation and the lack of vision as to doing things differently. I think your best, your best course of action here is to rethink how you do school. The state has its way of doing it. Businesses have their ways of doing business, and everyone's suffering because they're not thinking of new ways to do these things. This is a great opportunity. A crisis is a great opportunity, and the people who will be remembered afterwards are the people who rethink and redo and reinvent the systems that carry us forward. I don't envy you your positions, but I am, in a way, kind of jealous because if you are the innovator, if you are the person who works through the old way of doing things and creates the new way of doing things, then you'll be remembered positively forever. If you insist on doing things the way that they've always been done, you may be remembered, but it won't be positively. We know for a fact that the old way will kill people. So your job is to find a way to do it differently. Find new policies. Find new ways to deliver the system. The pandemic demands it. It's a virus. It's not terribly smart. You don't have to think terribly hard to outthink it, but you got to think beyond the system that you're in. You put people in classrooms with the kind of ventilation that we have now, people will get sick and die. That's just going to happen. We've got reams of evidence supporting that. So this is a challenge. Are you up to innovating? Are you up to rethinking how to deliver education in an effective way that's not the same old way? Because if you follow the same old ways, it will not go well. You will not be fondly remembered afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kilgallen. All right, at this point, we are transitioning to those speakers who recorded their comments last night.
...superintendent for Facility Services for Brevard Public Schools. In consideration of the current health and safety concerns during the COVID emergency, guidance from Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, as well as Executive Order 20-91 issued by Governor DeSantis, it has been procedures for public comment. Tonight, we are recording comments for the public comment section of tomorrow's school board agenda first, and then for the public comments on the proposed millage levy that is later on the school board agenda. We have 17 registered to speak under public comments and one registered to speak under public comments on the proposed millage levy. Comments for both sections of the agenda will be recorded, and we will play them back under the public comment section or the proposed millage levy section of the board meeting tomorrow. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Our moderator will keep track of your time and ask you to conclude your comments when you have reached three minutes. Always keep in mind that reasonable decorum is expected at all times. Please keep your comments appropriate for our children who may be watching or listening from home, the organization you represent, if applicable, and we won't be answering questions on tonight's call, but our staff will follow up with you if you have a question or need a response. Thank you. Ben, I think we're ready to proceed.
Sounds good. For anyone that would like to make a comment, please go ahead and press zero now, and Donna will get you in line to make your comment. So go ahead and press zero now, and we'll get you in line to make your comment. We are going to go ahead and our first one, Jenny. Jenny, go ahead, state your name and then your comment.
Hi there. My name is Jenny Barna. I'm from Melbourne. I'm here to take a few minutes of your time to express why I believe a mandate. I want to stress that I'm not against masks, but I do believe that it should be a person's and the family's choice on if they wear a mask. The key word I'm using here is "choice," and although that's not my main reason, why I'm against the mask mandate, I do strongly agree with that word "choice." As a parent and a teacher, though, I believe that requiring students and teachers to wear masks is just going to create more problems. I have taught in Brevard County for going on 19 years, and when I think about the types of students I've taught over the years who have disabilities, I'm truly concerned for them if they are required to wear a mask. Over the years, I've had students who sat in my classes who have had sensory challenges, autism, anxiety, or they've dealt with very traumatic experiences, things that have happened to them that were traumatic. And outbursts. Not only is this detrimental for the individual, it also will be a major disruption in the learning environment. If you've ever taught students with disabilities, I'm sure you can think back to a particular student and the challenges that the student had in a regular maskless environment. Now think of the challenges for that student and how he or she might react if they were forced to wear masks. We have students with all kinds of health challenges as well, such as asthma and other respiratory issues, and what about problems or hearing challenges? In the lower primary grades, students are learning how to pronounce words. They need to see their teachers' faces. The teachers need to see the students' faces and mouths. And wait just for a second here, and let's think about those disruptive students. Think of some of the disruptive behaviors I've dealt with over the years, and then I think about how much force it could have been if they had a mask on. It's truly concerning. I think secondary teachers, no matter what your belief is on masks, can agree that this will open huge cans of worms in regards to the shenanigans disruptive students will participate in. And are they going to have to take them off at lunch and PE? We live in Florida. We're starting school in August. Oh, yes, and what about if the students get sick while wearing a mask? Not only can you, in regards to say, let's, you know, if a kid gets sick and vomits, but what about when someone gets sick because they've been wearing their mask for too long? What if it's a dirty mask? Can you imagine what they will be breathing in over and over again? Can you say lawsuits? And lastly, what about this whole base of, y'all wearing masks and social distancing, but still they are now being asked to quarantine? To conclude, I completely understand that some parents want their children wearing masks, completely understand that some teachers want to wear masks, but it really needs to be a personal decision, and if a person is that concerned about their health or their type of health, they may need to reconsider pending school life or feel safe that the mask they choose to wear will do the job it's supposed to do. Please ask that you carefully think about all these issues and circumstances I brought up and vote against schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before we go to our next person, anybody who else would like to get in line to make a comment, press zero, and Donna will get you through in line to make your comment. Next, we're going to go to Sabrina. Sabrina Gunn, state your name and your comment.
Hi, I'm just calling over, sorry. Okay, so my name is Sabrina Nobley-Law. I am a mom with children in a Brevard Elementary School. I am a school volunteer, a PTO member, and a former Brevard Public School teacher. My first question is, what is the current teacher shortage count after many teachers have recently resigned, and how do you plan to correct this problem? Three questions are in concern of bringing more to schools opening on August 24th. Why haven't teachers been given any options? Do you have enough grief counselors to accommodate multiple schools at once? Do you have any funds allocated toward COVID-19 medical bills and funeral expenses for our teachers, staff, and students? Thank you.
Very much. We will go to our next speaker.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Dunn. I have two children in Brevard Schools, and so first, I want to say thank you to all of you for your very hard work in these difficult times. Today, I wanted to share my experience of what my family has had to do, has had, experience masks. About a month ago, my job put in place a requirement for all their employees to wear a mask. Within two weeks of abiding by this requirement, I developed a terrible cough and was diagnosed with severe sinus infection. I had never had a sinus infection. I had to be put on antibiotics to clear it up. I know without a doubt, wearing that mask for seven to eight hours a day contributed to my health problems. My child, who is an up-and-coming first grader this year, developed this infection around the outside of his nose, which attributed to wearing a mask. With no success of clearing it up on our own, he was then given a prescription topical. These masks have been proven to be unhealthy in our families, that and your decision to mandate masks. From my own experience of wearing a mask for long periods of time, I know how incredibly hard it is as an adult to keep from touching it for various reasons.
It looks like we may have lost our hearts, so we're going to go ahead. Before we take our next person, anybody else? Might go ahead and press zero now. And we'll go ahead and take our next person, Michelle. Michelle, go ahead and give your name and your comment.
My name is Michelle Decker. I'm the parent of two children in the Brevard County Public School System. My comment is meant to express my opposition to a mask mandate in schools. First, we're asking our teachers to become the mask police. They have so much on their plates already this year. Their students are behind, there's alternative learning, they're going to be kind of trying to figure out this new normal, and now we're kind of asking them to govern who's touching their mask, who's touching their face. Do you need to be re-... Do you need to be reassessed constantly? What if their mask breaks? What if they forget their mask? What if their mask isn't clean? What material are they gonna be wearing the mask out of? What if they're taking their mask on and off in class repeatedly? We're basically asking our teachers to govern all of this while trying to teach our students. The Brevard County Commissioners, which has a nurse practitioner on their board who voted down a mandate for masks because they didn't want the police to have to get involved in domestic disputes due to masks. And that was the language that they used repeatedly throughout that meeting, was we don't want our police to be the mask police. If we don't want our police to be the mask police, why are we asking our school teachers to be the mask police? Second, I have two processing disorder. Asking them to wear masks all day would be to their detriment because they would hyper-focus on their masks and not on their schoolwork. My seven-year-old already has issues just with the sound of a fan on in the classroom, but the expectation is that at seven years old, she's gonna be able to. I can't imagine the other parents with children where a mask would be detrimental to their learning and having to fight to get an exception for your children to wear a mask. And then to have your children constantly remind people who scold them that they're exempt and have to disclose their medical information to anyone who asks. That's not realistic to ask of my two kids or anybody's kids. Third, we've got kids arriving at school at seven-thirty A M. They're departing at three. If they're not in aftercare, five-thirty if they are in aftercare. Be going to expect children to wear masks for seven to ten hours a day with no breaks except for eating. Can you please just take a moment to think about that in reality? Even at my work, which has a mask mandate, they are only required whenever I'm moving around. If I'm not at my work to wear a mask. I agree with what someone else said in some of the other comments that I'm not against masks. I'm against forcing masks. So I, in conclusion, I would just ask that we keep the verbiage as it is. We not mandate masks and we move on to how we can help make people, make our kids successful this year. Thank you.
Very much. We will go to our next person to comment. Ashley. Ashley, go ahead.
And I'm a mother and educator. I am so tired of explaining myself. All I should have to say is my son has asthma, period. I shouldn't have to break down why I don't feel safe sending him back to school. I shouldn't have to deliberate and explain why I don't feel safe returning to work in a classroom. The fact is that even if he didn't have the general attitude in this county, as proven by the previous comments, that we all just need to take our chances. COVID-nineteen has proven that it doesn't discriminate, and no one knows how their body will react to the virus, period. Taking our chances is not what has been advised by science and medical professionals and the state of our nation, where four million infections have happened to date. It's not the case in most other countries that follow the advisement of their medical officials. I just want to share a few things that my son's pediatrician started. The virus is very difficult to spread if everyone wears a mask and practices social distancing, period. Neither of those things have been promised in the reopening plan. He said it makes no sense that we would close these schools in March, but reopen them now when Florida is the epicenter of this our country and in our world. The last thing he told me the last time we spoke is that the best thing we can do at this point is to protect certain individuals. And if you still think that children don't get COVID, he has confirmed that children in our county are getting it. I chose to follow the direct guidance of our family practitioner. My son is pediatric high risk, and sending him to brick and mortar reopening in a few weeks would literally put him at risk for severe long-term complications and deaths. I couldn't live with myself because I trusted this school board over the advice of our family doctor and every other medical professional in the world. It sure has been eye-opening for me that this school board and certain members of our county think that they have the right to make that gamble on our lives. I don't want to hear from you have been ordered to open the schools for out. Whatever happened to doing the right thing? Whatever happened to people standing up for themselves? I'm guessing they got tired, like I, I'm very tired. The CDC recommendation for reopening schools is when the positivity testing rate is five percent. On Tuesday, Florida's positivity rate was nineteen percent, which means that your reopening plan is negligent and irresponsible. What example are you setting with this reopening plan? Why don't you show our children when we've made a mistake and that we need to stand up for ourselves and just do the right thing? Keep these schools closed and offer a virtual-only plan, especially since the previous comments revealed that many parents are not gonna ask their kids to wear masks. For how long should we stay virtual until dying every week in our state? Two hundred people died on Tuesday of this week alone. I am begging you at this point, as a mother, to please just do the right thing and rescind your August reopening plan.
Thank you very much. Before we take our next question, I just want to remind you to press zero if you want to get in line to make your comment. We're gonna go ahead and take Kaylee. Kaylee, go ahead with your name and your comment.
Um, yes, my name is Kaylee George List. High school. I just wanted to say that there's quite a few things the board has yet again failed to address. So the governor in the press conference last week stated that teachers who are high-risk or who are uncomfortable being in the classroom should have a distance learning option. We have an option, and I think the boards and superintendent would be remiss to charge ahead with the current plan based on that. The plan has so many issues, but as a secondary teacher, I have to bring up the fact that secondary teachers are expected to speak both online and in person simultaneously. It is an unreasonable expectation if they're not putting on primary teachers. How can we effectively manage all those students' behaviors? The I E Ps and five oh four accommodations effectively while teaching in different classrooms? You're not asking primary to do this. Why are you asking us to do this? You've also failed to address the fact that teenagers in high school, so older children, spread the virus more like adults. You must mandate masks to keep us safe. If you want to do, you say you're doing, you know, what you have to do to keep us safe, the bare minimum to keep teachers safe is to mandate masks. And if you won't do that, you're literally just saying you don't care about us. There are quite a few board members who do seem to want to mandate masks. But the ones who won't, they hear you, and some of you are up for election this year. The last thing I wanted to talk about was the saying that we shouldn't expect teachers to leave masks and that it's unreasonable to ask teachers to do it. I'm more than happy to tell kids to put a mask on if it is that my family's safe. And the fact that you are putting away students' masks is ridiculous. My time.
Thank you very much. Our next comment will come from Sandy. Sandy, go ahead with your name and your comment.
Hello, my name is Sandy Gordon, and I am a secondary teacher. I am asking that you not mandate the wearing of masks at school. I have three reasons for my request. Number one, I work at A P, which stands for Positive Behavioral Interventional Support School, where students are encouraged to make good choices more than to be punished for poor ones. Mandating masks would not give students a choice and cause negative reinforcement by encouraging good choices. Number two, I would expect difficulties with enforcing this mandate, given so many exemptions. It would cause disciplinary issues and more class disruption and division in the classroom. And our society has enough divisions at this time. Number three, I teach students with autism spectrum disorder and some have sensory sensitivity. For a long class period would exacerbate this issue. It would also cause attention problems, not only for these students, but also for students with attention deficit disorder and the general ed students also. Please be considerate of the demand on the kids who are returning to school already stressed. Thank you for your time, your consideration, and all you do for our students.
Our next comment will come from Kristen.
My name is Kristen. I am a mother here in Brevard County, speaking on behalf of my own experience with my son in kindergarten. And when he had an active school that left so many students sick, throwing up in the hallways, the nurses also overwhelmed. At no point were parents notified or any social distancing measures as simple as hand sanitizer added to the classroom added. Find that as a model from when an actual virus was present in our school and nothing was put into place to enforce masks on students who are still learning how to wash their hands and, you know, just knowing how to socialize properly and appropriately with other students is not being enforced and taught. I think that adding masks is just another stress and pressure that are already overwhelmed and underrepresented classrooms don't need.
Thank you very much, Kristen. Our next comment will come from Nicole. Nicole, go ahead.
My name is Nicole Miles, and I'm a parent at Suntry Elementary. First, I'd like to thank Dr. Teresa Chappell, an epidemiologist with seventeen years' experience in public health. An expert Brevard specific guidance to the board and Dr. Mullins. And second, I'd like to thank the board, Dr. Mullins, and every V P S staff member for the excellent job you've done and for every night you haven't slept. I'm not sleeping either, and here's why. Dr. Chappell pointed out several super-spreader gaps in our plan, including our buses, lunches, and inability to socially distance. I'm here to talk about what that will really mean to Brevard. And rate equal to that of New York, over seven thousand children will get pneumonia. Over one hundred and thirty children will have respiratory failure, and fifteen children will die. It would only take the death of one child in my life to utterly dis Forty-seven point nine percent, almost half of children who are hospitalized, do not have pre-existing conditions. Let me repeat that. Even if your child is healthy, if she gets COVID-nineteen, she's just as likely to be hospitalized. Teachers and staff, over one hundred and thirty will be hospitalized, over eighty will die. Family members, because the infection doesn't stay at school, over two thousand four hundred family members will be hospitalized. Almost four hundred family members will die. Please take a moment to really let this sink in. Funerals, children struggling to breathe, students mourning, P T S D and children, survivors guilt when someone they loved dies. This is not better emotional. Do not reopen physical schools until it's safe. Safe means that even once our positivity rate is between three to five percent, we need required masks, succeed in minimum social distancing, adequate sanitation and hand washing supplies, reimagined lunch settings, and staggered openings and closings to allow more buses. Demand the funding we need to reopen safely. Use this month to work with community centers, libraries, and churches to create small, safe the need to safely bring their children. Don't accept this emergency order that results in a bottom-of-the-barrel plan for your child and our teachers and team staff. My child and your children are not disposable, and they are not replaceable. Thank you.
Our next caller is going to be Jade.
My name is Jade, and I just wanted to say the fact that we're currently meeting and even discussing the concept of masks shows that there's not enough science to support their safety or efficacy. If there was enough proof, this wouldn't even be a topic of discussion. Instead, we're all here arguing over wants and opinions of how bad this disease actually is and whether or not masks are safe or effective. Honestly, some of the people being harmed the most by this disease are our children, and I don't necessarily young kids need to see their peers and instructor spaces to understand the various emotions. They need to be able to choose to get close to their friends and also learn about personal space. They need to have communal supplies to learn sharing. They need to encounter germs so their immune system learn how to fight them off. Real, true normalcy. None of this new, new, normal garbage people keep talking about. This is my mama heart speaking. We're sending our kids to school, a place for them to be taught, loved, and cared for for the majority of their day. It seems so harmful to me that our children or our children to be so separated and shut off from each other. I believe it's the ultimate goal for the school board to see the students grow through the school system, and I believe masks will be detrimental to that growth process. This decision needs to be left up to the parents and ultimately to the needs to be a learning process for everybody to love one another regardless of a difference of opinion and regardless of different health or mental condition. Thank you very much.
Our next question and comment is going to be Christine. Christine, go ahead.
I'm Kookameech High School, and seventeen years of working for little. On a foundation of stellar evaluations and solid test scores, I have served you well. My students and parents can attest to my years of successful service, and I pride myself on my own accountability. I've designed curricula when there was none, and I stepped up to take on extra responsibilities when there were not enough employees to hire. Going above and beyond, I, like so many others, am the valuable employee who makes your organization. Where is that value to you? Like other employees, I have a congenital heart condition. My cardiologist deemed it unsafe for a return to the classroom where there is no clarity for masks, no definition of social distancing, and the concept of adequate cleaning is debatable. Even an organized graduation resulted in exposure, and some of us cannot afford a margin of with COVID, my outcome would most likely be either death or a detrimental reduction in cardiac stability, affecting my quality of life, and I am not alone. So tonight, I would like to speak on behalf of our high-risk employees and additionally invite them to reach out to you. Where is the accountability the district demands from us? Still awaiting Mr. Stevens' response by July fourteen email, it seems the district colleagues are part of the governor's platform that speaks this. Governor DeSantis has repeatedly assured the meeting that high-risk employees would be given alternate assignments, and I have asked this question in various emails, and I am asking again tonight. What are the district's plans for the most vulnerable, high-risk employees? I have yet to hear any such plans, despite clear chairs, the A D A, and pleas from valuable, at-risk employees with cancer, heart conditions, lung conditions, and other elevated risks. You have surveyed parents and students, but have you asked to hear from your high-risk employees? Can you identify what percentage of your employees fall into this category? Have you weighed out whether or not deny them leave, thus questioning their value as humans? We have invested decades in our futures into your organization, rising to meet your demands in ever-changing areas. The crowded classrooms, ensuring I E Ps and five oh fours are met as we treat each student like the valuable individuals they truly are. Where is that respect in return? We have been praying in endless drills and emergencies on how to protect our storms and bullets, but who will protect us? At this point, the silence and almost hostile approach of the district has given us little option but to band together. We are presently having to seek legal options for employees that are being ignored rather than given realistic governor-stated options to protect our valuable health. I know there are others in the same position, but we are finding a way together. And I ask if you're a high-risk teacher, feel free to reach out to me.
Very much. Our next caller, Karen, go ahead.
Karen McCullough, and I am a parent in Brevard County and a community ambassador for the Florida Freedom Keepers, a grassroots organization that advocates for medical freedom. Mandating that our children wear masks to school removes their freedom of body autonomy. Just as we are seeing paired masks to shop, people are hostile to those unable to wear a mask. Whether it's due to a pre-existing non-contagious condition like asthma, a sensory issue, or prior abuse resulting in anxiety, many reasons for not wearing a mask are valid, and therefore they should not be mandated. School should be a safe place for children to come and be educated and cared for. The problem is the fear everyone has of a treatable disease that has not had the originally anticipated Yes, tragically lives have been lost as they are to all viruses and diseases. I urge everyone listening to look up the video of Senator Rand Paul and Dr. Fauci on schools. Senator Paul has good information on schools and other countries reopening and children not posing For the teachers, I urge you not to be afraid of a treatable virus, and I thank you for the challenging job that you do. For the school board, there is much chatter about people wanting to homeschool rather than having their children be forced to wear masks. If people feel more comfortable wearing one, let them, but allow each individual to make this decision for themselves. Mandating masks cause unnecessary division, and the truth is, a house divided against itself, that house cannot stand. That is currently the state. Don't make that the state of our schools. Thank you for your time.
We're gonna now go to Kim.
My name is Kim Maithen. I just want to say that I don't feel like it is a good idea to start in-person classes in August with the cases continuing at such an alarming rate. Many people in harm's rate, many people in harm's way. But I know this decision has already been made, so I'm asking you, please require mandatory face masks to protect teachers, staff, and students. I know it will not be easy to implement such a change, but it's something we need to do to save lives. Thank you.
This is Sue Han, and I wanted to say I appreciate all of you being on the call tonight. That concludes the speakers for the public comments section of the agenda. Okay, thank you to all of our speakers this evening. Did any board member want to respond to any of the speakers from tonight?
I just, uh, one...
Other section of the agenda, which is public comments on the proposed millage funding.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs.
I just, one small... There was a lot to address there, but one small clarification. I just wanted to make sure that we had our department here today. And Brevard positivity rate is 6.6 over the last two weeks' average. So just want to make sure everybody's working with the right numbers. That still is about 5, but I heard some other really high numbers, and I want to make sure we know what Brevard numbers are. Thanks, Ms. Belford.
Thank you, Ms. Duskovich. Anyone else?
I just got a couple. And again, because this is the, the teacher in me, wants to make sure we've got great information going out. And, and Ms. Clark, you, you had said something about an outbreak at Baytown High School. I know the news has been, been going around about that, but it was not an outbreak. There was someone who tested positive who attended. It was an attendee. So, and the notifications have to go out. So the system worked the way it was supposed to work, is that when we found out there was an attendee really within 24, 48 hours, one day, we sent the notifications out to let everybody know so that they can do what they need to do. So just wanted to clarify that, because we've talked about that word. An outbreak is a really scary word, you know, and that's why we, we have the mandatory mask at the graduations and, and the social distancing. And even though it sounds like it wouldn't work perfectly everywhere, Ms. Skipper, that's why we had those things in place. I just want to clarify that. And also, Mr. Calucci, I heard, I, I watched, you know, we watched the negotiations, not always in real time. It depends. I mean, I, I know I had an appointment I had to be at during part of it. Go back. I usually go back and watch it, usually within a day. I haven't got to watch Tuesdays yet, but I know, I've been to a workshop put on by, some training session put on by Florida School Board Association, when we had some attorneys come in, and we talked about the negotiation process and the board's role in that. And that's, we are specifically not supposed to participate. We can attend as a public, a member of the public, but we're not supposed to, for a couple of reasons. One, it's not a sunshine-advertised meeting. If we were to be participating and more than one of us is there, then we're, we're breaking sunshine law. And two, because of our unique role that we sit in sometimes during the bargaining process, like we did last summer, that puts us in a conflict of interest and, or a position we're not supposed to be in. So, you know, it's, it's just not done. And honestly, from what I have heard, read, and heard, and been trained in, it's not supposed to be done for board members to attend. And we can attend, definitely. And if you want our faces to be there, you know, I, you know, like I said, we can, we can sit in the room, but we can't participate. So, um, and I think Mr. Kilgallen's already gone, but I would just say, this is my last one. You know, Mr. Kilgallen challenged us to do things with innovation and vision and to do, not do things the same old way. And I would just put out there that there's not a single cabinet member, department head, principal, or staff member in almost any department in this school district that is going to be doing things the same old way. It is not same-old, same-old this year. Everyone is having to rethink outside of the box. And I, when I think about e-learning and what our teachers are going to be doing, our technology team is working, you know, their tails off, trying to get it, we can make that happen in the best way. When I think about our new cleaning processes, our new scheduling, going to block schedule, I know some people don't like that, but I mean, we're making some pretty big changes in a pretty short amount of time. So I would challenge that, that I think there's lots of innovation and, and I, I wouldn't put the credit on the board. I don't think any of us would take the credit for that. I think we have an amazing staff who's done an amazing job and, under really, really difficult circumstances. And to say that it's same-old, same-old is really discrediting all the hard work that they've done, and I think they deserve a lot of credit for that.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell.
Absolutely. Any other board members wish to respond to public comment? Mr. Gibbs, did you want to... Okay. All right, then we are going to move us into the consent agenda. Dr. Mullins.
There are 11 items under the consent agenda category.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. Does any board member wish to pull any items?
I do. I can't find where I wrote which one I want to pull. Give me just a second of pages and notes. 18? That would be F-18.
Ms. Eskerbar, would you please pull item F-18? Any other board members wish to pull any items from the consent agenda? All right, then I will entertain a motion to accept the consent items with the exception of item F-18.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Duskovich. Is there any discussion? All right, please vote. Thank you, Ms. McDougal, and the motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins. That takes us to item F-18. Ms. Duskovich, since it was your pull, would you like to move?
Uh, move to approve with an amendment. Does it need to be second before I amend? Mr. Gibbs?
Yes, you need a second to open it for discussion, and then she can move to amend, and you'll need another second on the amendment.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell.
Moved by Ms. Duskovich, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Open for discussion.
I move to amend.
Second.
Move to amend the motion to approve the inter-local agreement and authorize the superintendent to sign the deed when completed in line with the inter-local agreement.
Um, so we have a motion and a second, so I will ask for your vote on the amended motion.
Need a second on the amended.
Oh, second.
I thought we had a second.
I was a premature second, so second.
All right, moved by Ms. Duskovich, seconded by Ms. Campbell on the amended motion.
The amended motion is to approve the inter-local agreement and authorize the superintendent to sign the deed when completed in line with the inter-local agreement. Can you tell that came from Mr. Gibbs?
We have, yes, we have a motion and a second, and Ms. Eskerbar is requesting a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes 5-0. We all good there?
Still doesn't mean we don't get to ask you again for more stuff.
Come back anytime, Liz. We love to see you.
Thank you, Liz. Thank you for being here.
All right, we will move on to the action agenda. Dr. Mullins.
Ms. Belford, members of the board, there are nine items under this category, two of which we will take action before we recess and convene the tentative budget hearing. The first action item is procurement solicitations.
What are the wishes, the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by, moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by, I'm going to give it to Ms. McDougal this time, Ms. Campbell. Any discussion? Please vote. Thank you, Ms. McDougal, and the motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins.
Next, we have department-school initiated agreements.
What are the wishes, the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Any discussion?
Yes. Yes. Really quickly, just wanted to highlight a couple of things. One, that I ready, we're able to use CARES Act money to have the full package. So we have the instructional piece, which many schools have not been able to purchase for the last couple of years because it's expensive. Some of our Title I schools have been able to because they have the extra funding, but, or schools did, you know, creative moving the money around to get it. But we are able to buy that for all of our schools, along with the toolbox and, and all the other pieces, and I can't roll with other pieces, but that's fantastic. And then also, very, just working, again, working their tails off, Mr. Cheatham, we're able to put on this agenda item, a Zoom contract. So we're, you know, going to be using Microsoft Teams this year, but for those who've been wanting to use Zoom for our e-learning, distance learning that we're going to have this year, thank you, Mr. Cheatham, for, and your team for getting that together so that we can get that approved on tonight's board meeting and have that as an option for our teachers to train and get ready for school.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Any additional discussion? Please vote. And I'll just slide in while we're voting. Some kudos for Mr. Gibbs, too, because he had a little hand in to make sure that that actually made it to us.
And it's not like he wasn't doing anything else today.
And the motion passed. Oh, Ms. McDougal, your vote?
Thank you.
And the motion passes 5-0. All right, Dr. Mullins.
You now have the amendment of language regarding face coverings in the reopening schools 2020-21 plan.
What are the wishes, the board?
Move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. McDougal. Is there any discussion? Please vote. You're an aye, and the motion passes 3 to 2. All right, we will now recess the regular board meeting. The public hearing for the 2020-2021 proposed millage rates and tentative budget is now in session. Dr. Mullins.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Ms. Cindy Lesinski, chief, chief financial officer, will make a presentation on the proposed 2020-2021 millage levy and budget.
Good evening, board members. This is the first public hearing for the proposed millage rates and tentative budget. Tonight's public hearing will include remarks regarding the proposed millage and budget. There will be an opportunity for public comment and board member discussion. We will request that you adopt a resolution setting the proposed total millage levy that was set by the state to support 2021 tentative budget. We will also request that you adopt resolutions approving the 21 tentative budget as presented. We will request authorization for the superintendent and staff to perform all necessary actions to comply with the truth and millage requirements. Lastly, we will announce the, the date of the final hearing. So let me start by explaining what truth and millage is. The truth and millage legislation was enacted in 1980 to redirect taxpayers' concern over rising taxes from the property appraisers who do not control the levying of taxes toward the government taxing authorities that set the tax rates. The truth and millage legislation requirements are detailed under Florida statute. Time, uh, TRIM timelines are very prescriptive in law, and the clock started on July 1. The total timeline for the budget adoption is 80 days. The statute dictates the order of business during the budget hearings, and TRIM requires two public hearings for open discussion on millage rates and the tentative budget. Okay, so what is a mil? Millage is a term that represents the tax rate levied on real estate or other property. One mil is equivalent to $1 in taxes per $1,000 in taxable value. If your home was a, if your home has a taxable value of $100,000, you are assessed, and you're assessed one mil tax rate, then you would pay $100 in taxes. The Florida Education Finance Program, FEFP, is a mechanism by which state and local funds are allocated to Florida school districts. The Florida Legislature sets the required local effort millage rates. The school board must levy the required local effort millage rates in order to participate in the state funding under the Florida Education Finance The total proposed millage related to school funding for 2021 is 5.942 mils. This millage will generate revenue for the general operating fund and the capital outlay fund. Using the proposed millage rate at the 21 taxable property value, our total projected tax levy is approximately $278 million at the 96% collection rate. The required local effort and discretionary millage makes up the local operating funds. The capital outlay millage is levied for capital improvement. Again, the board must levy the required local effort in order to participate in the Florida Education Finance Program and receive approximately $172.8 million in local tax proceeds. The full basic discretionary millage will garner $35 million. When a school district levies the full .748 mil levy, and it generates an amount of funds per FTE that is less than the state average, the school district will receive a discretionary millage compression supplement that will bring the district up to the state average. And for us, that would be $7.8 million. The local capital improvement millage, or LCI, will provide the district $71.2 million. $35.3 million comes off the top to pay for our district's debt service. LCI also contributes $10.3 million for maintenance costs for labor, and LCI also pays for property insurance, which, which leaves $19.6 million for capital needs projects throughout the district. When you compare the actual 2020 RLE rate to the proposed 21 millage rate, there is a decrease of .144. Therefore, the proposed total millage rate related to school funding is, again, 5.942 mils, and this represents a decrease of .144 mils or a 2.4% reduction. This slide depicts, uh, this slide depicts the, the historic millage rates over the last 10 years, and you can see that since FY13, the millage rates have gone down while our property values have increased in this county. As required by TRIM, we must compare the proposed millage rate to the rollback rate. The rollback rate is the millage rate that would generate the same amount of revenue at, as last year if applied to the current year's adjusted taxable value. Said another way, the state rolls back the rate as property values increase to bring the total dollars available roughly equivalent to the prior year. Under TRIM, the rollback rate is the basis for determining if tax rates have increased or decreased. The, the rollback rate is generally less than the proposed tentative rate. When the rollback rate is less than the, the proposed millage rates that we receive from the state, we must advertise a tax increase. For Brevard Public Schools, the proposed, proposed millage rate is 2.49% higher than the rollback rate. The notice of proposed tax increase was advertised in the Florida Today on July 25. This slide, um, this slide shows the taxable property values or the tax rule. And then you'll see, um, from 2008 to current year, 2009 was the highest annual tax rate, I'm sorry, um, was the highest annual tax rule prior to the Great Recession. I'm sorry, was the highest annual tax roll prior to the Great Recession. Property values have increased each year since FY13. And then the good news is, there is no evidence right now that the virus has reduced property values. Both builders and realtors expect the demand for single-family homes to remain firm in the near term. Conditions could change in the fall if we experience high unemployment. So let's walk through an example. How are property taxes calculated? The taxable value of a homeowner's property equals the assessed value as determined by the Brevard County Property Appraisers Office, less the $25,000 homestead exemption. The homestead exemption is an amount that is exempt from property taxes. The amount is established by law for properties used as homeowners' primary residence. So when you take a look at this slide, the assessed value is $100,000 for a home, less the homestead exemption of $25,000, leaves a taxable value of $75,000. Divided by 1,000 times the millage rate of 5.942, if you had a home that was assessed at $100,000, your school property tax would be $445.65. This slide illustrates the changes in school-related property taxes for a homeowner over several years. In this example, a home valued at $205,000 in 2016 would have generated roughly $1,002.44 in school-related property tax. If the owner qualified for Save Our Homes by 2021 school year, the assessed value of that same home would be about $222,000. Based on that valuation, the school-related property tax would be $1,001.75. This is an increase of $2.01 from 2019 tax year, and a four-year collective decrease So what does this mean for our families? The average family will pay $1,039 in property taxes on a home assessed at $200,000 earmarked for the public schools in Brevard County. Over the course of one year, that averages out to be $2.85 a day. You can see that $2.85 a day is critical in servicing our children's education. The $2.85 per day pays for teachers, schools, counselors, utilities, the fuel for yellow school buses, technology for the classrooms, lab equipment, science, equipment for science classes, the building repairs, renovations, improvements, and the list just continues to go on and on. $2.85 is a very, very positive investment for our students and our community. This is the district's total tentative budget in summary form. The general fund is where most operating expenditures are paid. In addition, tonight you will approve the tentative budget for debt service, which is used to pay for the outstanding bonds of the district; capital projects, which accounts for the major construction and renovation projects; special revenue, which consists of food service and federal grants; internal service, which accounts for the district's health insurance, property casualty, and workers' compensation programs; and the enterprise fund for the Brevard after-school. And so now I think we're ready for public comments or questions?
And I believe, Ms. Hand, we had one recording on this, correct? And we don't have anyone who has requested to, no one signed up to speak, present? The hearing is now open for public comments. We will, in accordance with Florida law, accept the speakers in the following order: the 2020-2021 proposed millage levy, followed by the 2020-2021 tentative budget. The proposed millage levy, and we have one speaker for that section of the agenda. So Ben?
Already. Yes, I asked one of somebody, Kathy. Kathy, just go ahead with your name and your family.
Yes, my name is Kathy West. I would like to speak on behalf of the subs. We continue to be in a sub crisis, and nothing has been done as far as giving the subs a raise. It's been a year since I've been coming before the board, asking for a raise. Now we're at a situation where now we are up against having to go into a classroom without adequate pay. And I just suggest that all school employees get paid hazard pay. That concludes my announcement.
Okay, is there any individual? Is there any individual that would like to address the board on the 2020-2021 proposed millage levy? Is there any individual that would like to address the board on the 2020-2021 tentative budget? All right, then the public comment portion of this hearing is now closed. That will bring us to the recommendations for the adoption of the proposed millage rates and tentative budget. Dr. Mullins?
There are a total of three separate motions for the board to consider. I will read each of these recommendations into the record and request board action. G26, adopt proposed 2020-2021 millage rates of: for general fund, required local effort 3.694; local discretionary 0.748; for capital outlay 1.500; total millage 5.942.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Is there any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Escobar is requesting a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion passes 5-0, Ms. Escobar. Dr. Mullins?
G27, adopt the 2020-2021 tentative budget of: general, $650,090,079; special revenue, subtotal, $1,355,713,847; less transfers of $57,414,995; total, $978,298,852; internal
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And the motion passes 5-0, Ms. Escobar. Dr. Mullins?
G28, authorize the superintendent to take the following actions. A, notify both the property appraiser and the tax collector of the proposed 2020-2021 millage and the following rollback rates. General fund rollback rates of required local effort, 3.6560; local discretionary, 0.7125; capital outlay rollback rate, 1.4289; total rollback rate, 5.7974. B, notify both the property appraiser and the tax collector of the final public hearing on September 10, 2020, at 5:30 p.m. at the Educational Services Facility, Viera. And C, adjust the revenues and expenditures, if necessary, prior to the final public hearing.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. The proposed 2020-2021 millage rate necessary to fund the tentative budget exceeds the rollback rate by 2.49%. Hearing no further business. The hearing is now adjourned, and we will reconvene the regular school board meeting. We are now at our information items. The board will not take action tonight, but these may be brought back later for a vote. There are two items on the information agenda. Does any board member wish to discuss either of them?
Really nice.
Was that a yes?
No, just, it's our mental health plan, and it's really good.
Okay. Ms. McDougal, desire to discuss either?
Nope.
Okay, then we are now at board member reports and discussion points. Does any board member have anything further to report?
Just like to ask a couple, give me a second.
Sure, Mr. Susan.
So, a lot of the, a lot of the people out there, I was, I had some concern over, over computers and stuff like that for each one of our teachers, because one of the issues we have is going back and forth. So I called Russell, and I said, hey, Russell, what are we doing in this regards? And he says, we've got it, we're working on it. The problem, they are working on getting our teachers all of laptops and everything else to be ready. The problem that we have right now is, we're ordering based upon the supply chain because of all of the other issues. So they're working on the supply chain issue right now, along with what we have in hand at each school in order to be able to deploy them. So a lot of the people that were out there that were worried about the computers, we do have a plan. When they come and how they come is going to be part of that, but there is a movement towards that. I also was very happy to find out from Dr. Mullins that we are moving on giving our teachers who request them any P95 or comparable masks. Is that right, Dr. Mullins?
Yes, sir.
And also, Dr. Sullivan was looking into providing, looking into divider companies and providing dividers for those teachers that need them inside their classroom for small group instruction and stuff like that. Is that right, Dr. Mullins?
It is, with one slight correction. Because, Dr. Sullivan was having a bit of a heart attack. She is, she is not leading the divider study. Ms. Klein and Mr. Novelli are working on that through procurement. So wanted to take that off of her plate, make sure that that was clear.
But I did just want to say that I was very happy to find out that Dr. Mullins was moving on those things, that the masks and the dividers, and that we will be taking care of our teachers. One of the issues that we had that was a big fear was that these teachers would be coming back without the masks that they needed, or without the dividers that they needed. And to know that staff is working on it and moving towards it was very nice. And I just wanted to commend you, Dr. Mullins, for doing that.
Thank you. Just to clarify, so folks who haven't been following that discussion, it's the Plexiglas dividers that we have demonstrated at the board in previous presentations.
Thank you. And with that, I am done, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Ms. Escoviet?
Just one comment. I was going to make it around the budget, but it wasn't, it's not that I was going to vote against the budget, so I just saved it for now. I have concerns, I voiced them before, and I spoke to Dr. Mullins right before the meeting, too, to just voice them again, but I wanted to get it in front of you all also, with the proposed budget cuts that are included with our budget this year. I have concerns about the IT cuts for IT staff that are in our individual schools. Dr. Mullins has assured me they're going to keep a close eye on that. If something happens and we are reverting to entirely e-learning or something of that nature, and we have schools without tech support on site, I think that could really become a disaster really quick. And so, he assured me that they'll keep a close eye on it, and if any time it becomes to the point where we can't handle it and our services are getting poor, that we will revisit those cuts.
Yep, meeting with Mr. Cheatham regularly and keeping a handle on it, and we'll continue to monitor that closely.
Thank you, sir. That's it, Ms. Belfort, thank you.
Ms. Campbell?
Yep, really quick, and again, I could have said it during the budget presentation, but it's kind of separate from the budget. I asked Ms. Lesinski some questions earlier today related to COVID with our savings, because, you know, there are, if people take a look through the budget, there's a couple of things sprinkled in there related to our savings, but there's not necessarily the things related to the COVID funding that we're going to be receiving from the federal government and state and those expenditures, so I asked about that. And so I think the answer was that those are, because we're, that we're, why don't you just, why don't you tell me what the answer is, instead of me trying to explain it the way I remember it?
Okay, so I believe your question was what the 4.6 million was for COVID savings within the budget book?
No, just as far as, like, are the COVID-specific expenses included in our budget? Or how are we, because they're not, you know, they're not our regular, how is that working?
Right, so that, the expenses wouldn't be in the budget book?
Okay. So, so I was going to ask Dr. Mullins, because I, we're doing such a great job, and you all are updating us on our regular, you know, our COVID grants that we've got, there's several different, because we have the one from the federal government, right, and we have the one that the state has put out, and we've already been using it for all different kinds of things. Can we, maybe monthly or so, have something that we can put out to say, here's what we've received? Because some of our CARES Act money, we actually haven't received, correct, Ms. Lesinski?
We actually haven't received-
Any of it?
Any of the funding for either ESER or GEAR grant. GEAR was for the summer academic programs-
That we're running right now.
And ESER is the COVID-related federal funds.
Okay, so-
And, I'm sorry, and currently, we're using the COVID savings that you referred to earlier about the savings that we had because of the schools closing.
Right.
So we had savings from utilities and buses and substitutes, those kind of things. So that savings, we're using that right now to cash flow expenses until we get reimbursed from the CARE.
Right. So I think it would be helpful to maybe have a monthly check-in of, here's COVID funding that we've received, even if, right, if it's zero, separate from our, separate from our savings. Because I think our savings is based on the great work that you guys have done to capture all that. But here's, here's what we've received, and here's what we've expended. Because I, every now and then I hear people say, well, you got all that CARES Act money, why aren't you spending on this, why aren't you spending on that? And everybody's got a great idea where it needs to go. But we have been spending it on this summer learning, catching up kids. I know we've got, you know, Ms. Hand's department, I think, is, some of that is gone towards our cleaning supplies and our things like that. So can we just do a rundown that we can, something that we can put out? You guys are sending something to us, but something real simple, but, you know, this many dollars towards this program, this many dollars towards that, just so that we can keep people updated on how, where that money, when it's coming in, and where it's going.
Sure, and I'll take this opportunity to remind the board that when we do receive final approval for the ESER and/or GEAR grants, those will come back to the board for board approval before any expenditures from those grants.
Right.
So we're confident, we're qualifying for the grants, we're waiting final approval, we're using COVID savings from this past year to cash flow necessary purchases to stay ahead of supply chain. But we have not expended, we've not deployed specific programs that would be part of the CARES grant, ESER, because we've not received confirmation of that, and we have to get final board approval. But to purchase hand sanitizer, which we know we need, to purchase masks, which we know we were going to need, we front-loaded that with our own operating budget.
Right.
In full anticipation, we can reimburse it, because the ESER grant will, can go back and reimburse prior expenditures before the 21 fiscal year. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So the next step would be, we'd be bringing the grant application back to you with the proposed expenditures for the board to approve, or to propose any additional amendments. And then, then we would have the approval to then formally begin deploying some of the expenditures related to that grant. But we can certainly keep the board apprised on a regular basis of what that looks like once it's approved.
And Dr. Mullins and I were talking in earlier, just so that everybody understands this, is that not only does the board have the approval, but in the event that we have something that we need that may need to amend it, we can do so. So you were concerned about your IT. We may have something that we don't see right now that may come, and that comes back to the board, and I amend, I commend Dr. Mullins for clarifying- And I amend, I commend Dr. Mullins for clarifying that with me, is that we can amend, and it comes back to us for final approval.
Right. And as far as the delay goes, that's, we're, everybody's, all the districts, not just in Florida, but because some of it's a federal dollar, we're all in the same situation, right, as far as just waiting on that money to come in, pretty much?
Well, it's at the state level for final approval. I'm not aware of any school district whose ESER grant has been approved at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. McDougal, are you good?
Hope I have to unplug myself. Yeah, I am good.
Okay. I have, let me give us a box for a second. We've talked a lot about, you know, over the past three weeks, you guys have heard tons and tons of discussions about the reopening plan and the research we're doing and trying to figure things out. And I spent much of this week reaching out to board members throughout the state to find out from them what they're doing in their district and what it looks like, and if they're meeting CDC recommendations or having to adjust. And in every one of those conversations with the other board members, everyone's plans look basically the same, right? We're all offering brick and mortar. We're offering virtual, and we're offering e-learning from home. We call it different things depending on the county, but they all look basically the same. Every one of those board members that I have spoken to said, you know, our ability to meet CDC recommendations really depends on how many people choose e-learning. The truth of the matter is that if most people choose to go back to brick and mortar, six feet is going to be incredibly unlikely for us to be able to attain in most of our classrooms. And Mr. Savage, I'm thrilled to hear that we could, I think you said 24 sixth graders? Yeah. But I would say that that is probably less routine. I think most of our classes are going to struggle to get six feet in between students. The CDC recommendation for the bus is insane. One student per row skipping rows on the bus. And I've yet to talk to a district that has figured out how they're going to do that unless parents who are able drive their children to school. So we face some pretty significant challenges in being able to go back to school safely via brick and mortar. And I think it's important to know that we are going to need our community on so many levels to make this successful. We are going to need our community to start making better choices so our numbers go down. There's significant research that shows the higher the community infection is, the less likely that we're going to be able to open schools successfully. We're going to need our community to keep their children home in the beginning of the year via e-learning if they are able to do so, and it's in the best interest of their child. Some children need to be in school absolutely. And that's why we'll have brick and mortar. But we can't do six feet if 60% of our students come back in person. And certainly, we, there's no way that we can meet CDC guidelines on our buses unless parents decide to carpool with other families or drive their own children, or we just, there's just no way that we can meet those recommendations. And so it's going to be critically important that we all work together going forward to do the best we can to ensure that the environment is as safe as possible for our teachers, for our staff, for our students, and for our students' families. And I hope that we can count on all of you to be a part of that solution as we go forward. Dr. Mullins, I think you are inviting Mr. Novelli? Did you have another report before then?
Yes. I asked Mr. Novelli just to take a few minutes. There's a lot of attention being given to reopening and discussion on the challenges that that presents, but there has been something else that has crept up on us, not really. But we've avoided saying the H-word, hurricane, but we are being confronted with that. And I asked Mr. Novelli to provide just a brief report to assure the board and assure our community that in the midst of all of the planning that is going into reopening, we are also working closely with our EOC.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins, board. This morning, as early as, I believe, 7:00 AM, I was on the phone with John Scott from the County Emergency Management, and I've talked with him two times since then, as late as 4:00 PM. And we do have a tropical storm, if you've been watching the news, that is headed our way. And I've been trying to practice how to say the name of this tropical storm, and I believe it's Isaias, but I may be wrong. The tropical storm, right now, the forecast and what John has told me that I can share with you all is no secret, you've probably seen it on the news, but it is forecast to head this direction and possibly go out to sea from us. And we're hopeful that it moves a little bit east, because if it does, we don't get the full effects of the storm. And I've been working with John and other folks at the EOC for the last couple of months. We met with them in early June to talk about their de-densifying plan, if you will, if and when we have to open up shelters this season. And of course, the interest is that we have to give some extra distance for each individual who attends one of our shelters. And so the normal rule of thumb for distance is between 15 and 20 square foot per person. And so they're moving that to between 45 and 60 square feet when they can get that. And so one of the things that they're asked to do is to open up some additional shelters or at least make available, in case we need them, some backups to the backups, if you will. We're calling them tertiary shelters. And so there are going to be as many as eight additional shelters that are available if we need those in worst-case scenarios. For this particular tropical storm, John assures me at this point they don't see the need for shelters this weekend. Of course, you know, that all depends on what happens, and we have to watch those weather alerts. If for some reason we did have to open up shelters, or I should say, if emergency management were to open up shelters, they would start with their own shelters, which are county community centers, rather than coming to the schools first. I have sent out an email to our leadership team to remind our principals tomorrow it's a good idea to collect up the loose items from around the school, make sure that any of the drains that they have at the school are cleared out from debris, and of course, to lock up the doors and windows tightly as they leave on Friday. So they'll be working with their custodian crews to do that tomorrow. And so I think that that's about covered. Is there any questions that you have for me?
I just wanted, going into the weekend and this on the horizon, admittedly, this morning, when Mr. Novelli called me, I couldn't tell him the name of the storm. I said, I've had a few other things going on, and I knew you had it covered. So he's kept us up to speed and got us well-prepared to go into this weekend, and just want to make sure the board and our public knew that in the midst of all the other things going on, we're also covering those bases as well. Thank you, Mr. Novelli.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Novelli. Dr. Mullins, did you have anything else?
That's all, Madam Chair.
All right. There being no further business, this meeting is now adjourned. Have a great night.